Well, it's six o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order even though we're short one member and we don't have the applicant here. But we're, at the moment, we're short Bob Burns. What's that? Yeah, yeah. So, let's take a look at the minutes. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll take a look at the minutes from last meeting. Oh, that's the only agenda we have. Yep. We have one item on.
Yeah, that's pretty hard not to.
Alright, so take a look at the minutes, if you would. Scan through the minutes and see if you have any corrections or additions. There we go. So, looking at the minutes. Okay, any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, entertain a motion to approve as written.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented here.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Aaron, would you read the notice for the public hearing?
Please take notice that an application has been made by Tim Stensel of La Crescent, Minnesota for a conditional use permit for an accessory building in a residential district in La Crescent Township. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room in Caledonia at 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 25th. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard relative to the granting or denying of said application. This was advertised on April 10th, and this is a continuation of a prior hearing on this same matter. Since the initial hearing on this, on this request, the applicant has amended the proposal, changing the orientation of the building to provide for access from his existing driveway without, without the need to travel on the neighboring property. Your staff reports show a new map of that new layout, I hope. Both a drawing provided by the applicant here, which is relatively decent to scale. Building rotates 90 degrees so that it's accessed from the, from the north rather than from the west. The primary topic addressed in the, in the staff reports, or the primary topics are twofold. First, the proposed driveway to access the new shed is in the vicinity of some of the septic, the components of the applicant's septic system. He did have the septic installer who installed that, most recently installed the system on that site. I had a conversation with him regarding what he's proposing here, and the outcome of that was that it wouldn't have any, any sort of negative impact. There is a drawing in your packets as well that shows the.
Can you hear us okay out there? Can you? This one, Aaron?
No, I guess it's a smaller, it's a smaller overview. Staff did map out based on the applicant's submission, the components of the septic system based on the as-built we have for that system. And indeed, it shows the system is not underneath anything that's being proposed as driveway. So, the conclusion was that there weren't any, any negative impacts to the septic system if you were to put a driveway in that location. The other concern is rooted in the comments received from the public about stormwater runoff and that the building itself would, would take up an area that's currently permeable and, and create some additional stormwater impacts. That is true. There is, there would be an increase in stormwater due to the roof. The concern was for runoff going to the south and going to the west. The runoff to the south, that area also drains to the west, but if you had a very heavy event, you might get some runoff to the south as well. And in terms of the extra runoff to the, to the west, it would be negligible compared to the runoff that's coming through that property from the north. However, it would still be an increase. So, staff did some calculations on what the roof would contribute to additional stormwater. That's the handout you got just this evening. And it's based on the, the total roof area, and I'll note that in my staff report when I'm saying that, when I'm giving a square footage for the building, it's including some overhangs that aren't enclosed by interior walls, and I've done that because the focus was on the stormwater runoff and not on the square footage of the building. So, the 23-28 square footage number includes, that's the roof square footage number, not the building's square footage number. But based on that, we would have approximately 1,450 gallons of runoff from a one-inch rainfall event. The applicant was proposing some rock treatment around the perimeter of the building to handle that runoff. Staff has a condition on here where we would propose something a bit more robust, where, where some of that extra capacity would be infiltrated on-site. I'll qualify that by saying we are not stormwater engineers. So, if, if, you know, the board wanted to, or the applicant wanted to have a professional with expertise in this area design something, we would have, I would have no problem with that. What we tried to do here is just put together some numbers so that you can make a decision based on, on something. The other thing I would mention is that during a heavy event, say you got one hour and a, or one, one inch of rain and, you know, one or two hours, not all of that would be infiltrated on-site under the status quo. You'd have some degree of runoff, you know, as well when it's coming down at that rate. So, I don't think the numbers that are in the, in the sheet that I gave you could necessarily be considered a, a net increase over the status quo. You know, if you had a very slow rain, perhaps, if you had a heavier event, you know, some of that water would certainly be leaving the site the way that it currently exists as well.
Is the applicant agreeable to put this structure in?
Well, like I say, he had proposed something. We had gone back and forth over, you know, what size might be required. I think there is some, there's a size that's stipulated in your staff report. Going to be amending what, what that recommendation is here this evening. But I think it's, you know, the best case scenario would be to find something that everyone's agreeable to, but ultimately, I think the board needs to decide, you know, what, what level of, to what extent does he need to go to handle whatever increases might be attributed to this building.
I've got a couple of questions for the applicant. Could I have him?
Have you finished with that?
Yeah, those are the main, main points that I had. If you had other questions on the information in staff report, of course, I'd be open to answering them.
One, do you have any ability to, I guess, figure out or guesstimate what percentage increase in volume that would be? It's, it looks like it's draining a large area just with, with natural ground.
Well, if you look on, I know this one is in there, if you look on page four of your staff reports, it's, it's a relief map with some arrows, and the arrows are supposed to indicate the flow of water. And the pin is dropped at the applicant's property, and there's three arrows there that are going, you know, toward those blue lines, which are the intermittent, or the drainages. And there's a culvert that goes underneath the county road above, above the property to the west's property. And most of the water that's draining to that property, based on my analysis, is coming from, from the north. There's a large, dozens of lots, if not more, a lot of area that's coming down through that drainage. This would be, you know, relatively small. It's essentially the applicant's yard and perhaps a bit of, maybe a lot to the south that are also draining that way. If you look further down, there's another drainage here, so the properties further to the east and further to the south are, are draining through here, avoiding, avoiding the, the neighboring property to the west. But this drainage here is draining this whole, this whole area coming down here, crossing the road, and going through the, the neighboring property to the west. So, in terms of the percentage of, of stormwater that's going through that property, that's coming from the applicant's property, it's very minimal.
Well, and the percentage of increase is even less.
Right. There, like I said, there would, under the status quo, during a heavy events, I, I can't give you hard numbers, but I can, I can tell you, this is my opinion, not all the water would be absorbed on-site. More of the water would be absorbed on-site under the status quo, which is what he's proposing. But that increase is probably quite small, given the amount of area that drains through this intermittent stream here.
Is the culvert under the driveway to the bus company?
Correct, yes, yep.
How big is that culvert?
I don't know.
Twelve?
Twelve inch?
Maybe twelve.
Twelve feet, twelve.
Twelve fifteen.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Could be twelve.
At least twelve. It's pretty big.
So, these arrows here on this diagram, do these mean that the water drains this way? Is that what that's saying, or what are those arrows?
No, that, that's a map prepared by the applicant, and I-
So, the arrows don't mean anything with water?
I think, I think those are denoting the setbacks. If you see, there's some numbers on there too. That little arrow has a 15, and then the other arrow has a 35.
I get it. I get that. I didn't think the water went that way.
Yeah, I know it goes.
If you guys want a bigger map of what I'm doing, I've got one drawn up for you.
The other building will be eliminated?
Yeah, and that's something he didn't take into consideration.
How large is that?
The building itself is 12 by 20, but there's cement on the outside of it. So, total square footage of ground that is cement is 14 by 25, which is 30, 350 square feet. So, he, you know, he didn't subtract that, because I'm going to add that to water drainage. And something I want to add, we drain 10,000 gallons of water from our pool every fall. Within an hour, it's gone from, in our yard.
It never goes.
It never goes anywhere.
Where do you drain it?
In our backyard.
We drain it to our backyard.
Where's your drain field? On this map, where's the drain field for the septic? Is that down there?
Right, right wherever, wherever you're pointing. That, that lie lock bush, right there.
So, basically, you're, when you drain your pool, it's right toward the drain field for the septic?
Yeah, and it, it doesn't go anywhere. And that's, I mean, 10,000 gallons in an hour. That's, that's a lot of water. And it's gone within no time at all. And right to the south of where we're proposing to put the building is the old septic drain field.
So, right now, how big a rain event would you have to have to have water leave your property? Hard to tell, or?
It's hard to tell, because I, I think maybe last year there was some in the culvert, but that was not only our water, that was our neighbor's water too.
So, the water, the water that comes off your house, does that pretty much all flow south toward that?
Yes, but I've never seen the water come off our house. I've never seen rivers going anywhere. It all goes into our yard and it disappears.
Does any flow across the driveway to the west? Is there a ditch there along that driveway?
Yeah, well, the, the, not a ditch, but it's mound, the driveway is mounted such that the wa-
Oh, it's higher?
Any water runs along ours to that culvert.
Okay, okay.
So, none of it drains across the driveway.
There, there is a bit of a ditch on the, near the southern property line, so water will come this way, it'll hit the ditch, and then it will go to the west.
Southern side, yeah, yeah. Another thing to think about is, you know, half the roof faces north, and you'll probably have, I'm assuming, rain gutters that will direct the water to the west?
Yeah, because the property faces east-west, so the roofs, yeah, so.
My, what I'm assuming is that you're going to direct the water on the north slope of the roof to the west, which will probably drain under the culvert.
Correct. I'm going to, I'm going to drain it, well, both ways, because I'm not, you know, it's 60 feet long total. I'm not going to have all of it go down one. That'll be a lot of water going down a gutter. So, the, so the one side of it, I'm going to basically push it to where the old shed is, or to where we put our water for the, for the pool. So, that's where that part's going to go. And then the other side is going to go along the garage, so it goes back to that culvert. I'm not going to, none of it is going to, you know, be going up to the road and going down the, right. So, here, I'll just give you this since I brought it.
Yeah.
You can just see what I'm, if you want it, that's. So, here's the shed. So, the gutter is going to go this way. This one will go this way. This is where the culverts at.
Dan, to answer your question earlier, what kind of event? A seven, seven-inch event would be equivalent to 10,159 gallons of roof runoff, which is what they're saying, is approximately what they dump when they empty their pool. So, that would be, if you're not seeing water.
We did have that once a couple of years ago. We did have that once a couple of years ago, and yeah, there were some puddles in the backyard for a couple of hours, but I-
Yeah, they were gone.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, there was, there was probably, there was water running, and in the spring when the ground's frozen, of course, water's going to run through the culvert. I mean, that, there's no yard in, anywhere that it doesn't run when ground's frozen.
Okay, any other comments that you have, different than, you know, we talked, we're continuing this conversation from a couple of weeks ago, or three, oh, a couple of months ago, a couple of months ago, yeah.
I thought I'd bring that, and I, and I, I have an elevation plan as well, so you know that it's going to be aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors.
Yeah, and the driveway, now you're going to be on your property?
I'll be on my property totally. And as you can see, there's plenty of room to put a driveway there, because I measured it right to the edge of the grass and the tar, so I'm, you know, right, doesn't matter where the property, at the property lines. Because we were discussing where was the property line.
You didn't have a survey done?
No, because there's plenty of room. I don't have to go, you know, I mow that lawn and he plows that driveway, so I think we can agree that the property line is close enough.
Okay.
But there's 20 feet. That's plenty of room for a vehicle.
You've got this drawing with two, I guess I'll say, orange lines, of the two driveways, or?
No, that's just the boundaries for it.
Okay, so you go down the middle of that?
Yes.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, like, like I drew there, that's, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Would you consider putting all the eaves dumping up to the south, instead of having one come back? You got half the building going this way. Is that a possibility, or would that be interesting at all?
Well, I, I know what you mean. The one on the north side would be difficult, because eight feet of that is a, is a, we'll call it a porch. So, you'd have that eve, and you'd have that downspout.
Right.
Right in your way, you know, right in your line, so that wouldn't, so.
So, you're, the north side, you're proposing go a half one-way and half the other way? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it'll probably be one-third one-way, two-thirds is going to go, like the garage area, I'm going to, you know, I'm sure the gutter guy will tell me what he can and can't do.
Yeah.
And the driveway's going to be gravel.
Okay.
Flat and gravel. I'm not going to put a cement driveway in until I have $40,000 to put a driveway in, because that's a long driveway.
Yeah.
So, the driveway itself is going to, you know, give me drainage as well.
Are there, on this photograph here, are there trees there that you're going to have to take down for your driveway?
Yeah, they're just shrubs.
Okay, okay.
But I cut them down two years ago, and they grew this much already.
Okay.
And where those trees are, that's going to be, come down to be level with, because that's up a little bit from where the garage is going to be. The garage is going to be just on the other side of those little trees. That's where it's going to start.
So, on, on the perimeter of the building, so on the north side, that's going to be all gravel?
Yeah.
And, okay, and so, would you be adverse to having a gravel perimeter, or not, I don't know, all?
Well, that's what I'm going to do around it. I'm going to put gravel and rock four feet around.
Well, four feet out, yeah.
Yeah, plus, there's going to be a 10 by 15 area where I'm going to put extra rock and gravel, which is going to be a parking pad for my trailer. Oh, that's her phone. Sorry about that. So, I mean, that's going to be additional water drainage or whatever, you know, a holding area for water.
So, when you say holding area, you're going to berm it up just a little bit to hold water, or you got?
No, because that culvert is only 25 feet from that area.
Okay.
Why not let the water go there, and then if it overflows, just let it run to the culvert?
When you say overflows?
Well, you know, I don't know why, you know, when you say berm it up, that means if the water gets up that high, well, why not just let it?
Just to slow the initial runoff, that's all I was asking. I was just asking.
Oh, it's 25 feet to the culvert. I don't see why we need to.
And that would be all vegetation?
Yes.
Yeah, it's grass that we mow. Yeah. And the culvert area is all grass right up to the culvert.
And the gravel and rock that you're going to do on the perimeter, how deep is that?
Well, I'm going to put it as deep as the foundation is for sure, so at least two feet.
Well, I mean, that's, that's close to what I think, what we were proposing and calling an infiltration trench.
Right.
The difference between that and what you're proposing is that there's a bit more to, you need some fabric below your rock.
Which, which I plan on doing, yeah, absolutely.
And then you need some larger rock, two-inch minus, or maybe larger rock near the bottom. And you want the whole thing a little concave, and that way you really, you get some capacity there, I think, based on this sheet you had. Can I give you one of these too, so you're looking at the same thing?
Yeah, which, you know, I, I think if putting it around it, instead of just putting it out in the middle of like, like right here,
Yeah.
for all the water, is, is way better for everybody.
Yeah.
Because who, who in their yard has something like that?
Yeah.
Nobody.
The driveway will have crushed rock, which will pack.
Correct.
That'll be hard. But on the back, on the, on the south and west and east, you have round rock, or?
Yeah, I plan on putting, putting, not, not crushed rock. I'm going to put, you know, sand and, and pebble, round rock for water to put through.
Somebody's got that, I'm sure. I mean, that's available, yeah. That would absorb water a lot more, have a lot more infiltration than crushed rock. Crushed rock will pack.
Absolutely, yeah. No, yeah, I wasn't going to do crushed rock. I meant, you know, rock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, what we throw down here as an example would be the south side of your building, the 46-foot. If you did a four-foot wide by 46-foot-long feature with ang, with slope sides that went down to three feet and filled that with rock, you would, you would have the capacity to hold up 138 cubic feet of water.
Right, and you can add to that, there's also another 24 feet of shed that I'm going to put four feet of it too.
Sure, so you go above and beyond.
So, it's not only 46 of the garage, there's 26, or 24 feet of that shop that's also going to have that, so.
So, when we were discussing this, just in the zoning office, one idea was that, you know, you'd have your downspouts on all sides, but then you would use corrugated pipe to get it to this feature in the back, so essentially all your water is going to, to this feature with some overflow then to the south if it, if it overwhelms that. But you, you deal with, you, I guess we didn't crunch numbers to demonstrate this, but it's reasonable to assume that you'd be dealing with whatever increase you're causing based on the roof with something like this.
Right.
And the old building you're taking out, you're taking out the cement pad and everything? You going to seat that back down then?
Yes, correct.
Good. Okay, any other questions of the applicant? Okay, okay, for now, any other comments in the public, Mr. Ready?
Thanks for informing me of this. Now that Tim's decided to change his building around and make the driveway alongside his house, on the map that you hit, this one here.
Right.
His yard's like two feet higher than my driveway, so if he puts a driveway in, is that all going to slope down on my road, is it going to slope towards his house? Is, is the water regression? That's my, that's my first question.
Where is it now?
It's a yard.
Is it, is it flat, or?
It's a flat yard. But it's a hard surface, it'll all go down, you know, he's, he's about a foot and a half higher than our driveway. So, we need to, that's a concern we have to have.
Okay, we'll hold it right there. Okay, you want to answer that?
Yeah.
The only part that's higher than his driveway is even with our house. Where the garage is going to be is level with his driveway. That area that I'm going to put that driveway in, I'm putting retaining block on that hill, so it's a driveway and everything will go down the hill and won't go across the driveway. So, the driveway will not drain, my driveway will not drain towards his driveway.
So, how long is that driveway? Is it?
Total, you've got to-
So, what percentage of it is higher than the neighboring driveway? Half of it? Is it?
Potentially, probably half, but most, as soon as we get past the septic, Tom, I'm going to straight that down and, and I'm going to go down. It's like where those, where the bushes are, that's going to be the same level as the garage.
Is the garage going to be raised up?
Well, yeah, of course, it's going to be up two, two or three inches higher than the ground. I don't want it to be even with the ground, so water runs in.
How close is the edge of the driveway to Tom's driveway?
Mine? I haven't really determined that yet. I, I would say four or five feet.
And so, this retaining, you know, what you're talking about, that's between your driveway and Tom's driveway?
Yeah.
You're going to, when it goes up in the air, you're going to have a wall, or?
Yeah, I'll make it go up like this and then come back down. Yeah.
So, then the water will run both ways on the driveway. If, I mean, it'll run north and south by the water if there's a heavy rain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there is a little water, I'm sure, that comes off my driveway and goes down the ditch, if you want to call it, between our properties, and it goes into that culvert.
Are you going to backfill that retaining wall with gravel?
Yeah, I'm going to put, you know, backfill it, so it's level, level in.
Okay.
So, then, I guess, you know, the, the next part of that is, is what do we do when we have snow? Where would you put his snow?
Okay, I'll ask that. So, are you going to plow snow to the, over on your yard off the driveway?
No.
Okay, there'd be room?
I'll have 15 feet to the, between my driveway and the house, with snow.
Okay. So, anyway, just so it doesn't get over on Tom's driveway, obviously, because you're plowing too. You have to plow your snow the other way.
Ours is the flats. We plow to the west, so.
Okay, just so you don't plow on each other's?
And I'm just saying, I have to say this, Tom, except for the first pass, they probably plow.
Yeah, that one they do, when they're busting, they'll open, but then they go after that. So, they try to, so.
Anyway.
So, I'm concerned about the water runoff for this, because this driveway's going to be, was it 200 feet, Tim, maybe? 200 feet long? From the, from county six.
Well, from county six, that's existing driveway.
Far, let's say from the side, let's say from the north edge of your house, so that's, that's quite a bit, but.
They've got the numbers right there, probably.
Okay, great, good.
It's like about 110, just by the scale, is what I'm guessing.
Yeah, I knew it was somewhere over 110.
I'm just guessing. Can I write on here?
Yeah, whatever.
So, the actual road that you're going to drive on is basically how wide are you talking? Are you going to go 20 feet wide, or are you going?
No, probably not. That was just how far it is from, or how wide I can make it.
Yeah, you, would be more than eight feet, probably, huh?
Probably eight or, yeah.
Eight or 10 feet.
Or wide as a vehicle. I don't need to drive a truck, huh?
Yeah.
So, that'll still be like a grass area between?
Absolutely.
Tom's and yours?
Yes, between the driveway and there, after that's done, yes.
And besides the retaining wall?
Right.
Yeah, and the distance, the actual distance between your driveway and Tom's driveway is going to be five or six feet, or?
At least.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and it'll be grass.
And some of this, you know, right now, he could gravel right up to his property line with no approvals from the county. He could gravel his whole lot with no approvals from the county.
Yeah, yeah.
The other concern, or the, the next concern I have is with the, the amount of water runoff, because it's, yeah, there's a culvert there, but that, that was because we had an old culvert there back from the 60s, and I replaced it when I filled that big- But that, that was because we had an old culvert there back from the sixties and I replaced it when I filled that big field in there. But I didn't put it in there that said water needed, you know, so that's my concern is, is that the, it goes through the culvert and it goes down the ditch between my building and Mrs. Cornford's. And like I said earlier, our first man on Mrs. Cornford's side, there's, she's got some heavy erosion there. I mean, it's, it's probably ninety feet straight up and down, you know, cause it's soft soil there on that side. It's broke through for many, many years of them. I put, I put, um, like, at the bottom end, I put in some like, uh, I guess it'd be six-foot boulder, or that's, probably four-foot boulders. I put probably three big truckloads of them to, to stop it. We, we do have erosion issues and then the issue I brought up too is since the, most of the neighbors there have joined the city. And then I think the last three on that, on which would be the west side of whatever that street is, that they turn off on before our driveway. I don't know what that's called. That's caused all the water to come my way into the culvert and I end up with the, with all the, too much. I got too much water coming, you know, it's just coming down through that whole ditch and I've got some issues that I'll have in the future with erosion. And then I'll end up paying for all that, for everybody's water coming my way. And that's a concern I have, gentlemen, is the worst, you know, put the mo- the water my way and, you know, uh, Tim's discussion about a pool, I, you know, we have the same thing. But that's the end of the summer, that's coming out probably one or two-inch pipe and you're, you got hot sun yet then. Whereas the other times of the year, you got frozen ground, I think that's where all the water goes, is it just flows downhill. And I, I think that's gonna cause an issue for my property, with that extra water going on there from the road. And then this, you know, the house or the building project that he wants to build. So, I, you know, I don't know, what do we do two or three years from now? Or do I go to say I got a deeper ditch? Does somebody wanna, does the county wanna help fix that? Probably not, you know?
Has your culvert ever been like overwhelmed where?
Sometimes, you know, a couple of times it has, you know, but that one has not that bad of a grade and it's a long culvert. It's probably, um, probably forty-foot long horizontal. And then I put like a forty-five to go down and then it goes down and then it splashes into those big rocks. That's how, that's how, back in the, that's Donnie Haves designed that for me, you know, and that's how that's set up, but.
That's the culvert that goes under the?
The one that goes under the road, yeah, that's, it's probably about forty-foot long with, you know, with a slope. And then it goes, like I said, it's got a sharp drop down to the bottom of that ditch that I put through there. Then the rest of the water comes through, where it comes through, I had a design, where it comes through under county six and I got big boulders there. But it does need to be improved and then, you know, with what's happened since with, um, the homes and stuff north on Bluff Drive above us, that's what's caused that to erode there. It's just, we never, you know, we never had that problem before, you know, until.
But those issues are outside of this.
They are now. They certainly are, but this is gonna add to that with this water coming, you know, from that property with the road and the way the house or the building is set up, gentlemen, so.
Well, if he digs that, uh, around the building, four feet out around the building and goes down and puts in the round rock. This soil does absorb moisture. What, based on the soil types?
It's silt loams, the ARI's and layer, below that, it's all sand is what the soil survey says. So, it should be a fairly good soil in terms of absorbing.
I would hope it would be, you know, that would absorb, you know, so that whatever it was would go, uh, you know, it'd get absorbed on his property versus using the, using my culvert as an exit for water from, you know, the buil- his building tops, you know, and the road. This is a big road, you know, we have, we have a lot of water running on our road. You know, it's the same, his is just an almost as long and we had a lot of ice issues this year. You know, several times we had a guy come in to throw gravel on it because the ice just didn't, you know, would freeze and, you know, we had this, you know, very unique winter for battling road surfaces and you guys know that too, what you, what you decided on for, you know, when you maintain the county roads, so.
You have, and that drains a lot of that, I mean, there's a lot of that subdivision comes in.
Yeah, we get, we get, we get all that, Mr. Hefner. I get more than I want. That's an issue I have to deal with.
I, yeah, I don't, I don't know who's responsible, apparently the city eventually.
Well, I just need to take a ride down there and talk to them next, because it's, it's happened, like I said, more in the last year. And, and on the other side of my property, in the south side, I've got more damage on that side because there's no control. Everything's, they just, the yard's all bent that way. I mean, I don't know, I'm gonna have to do something with that, with the, with the city.
Yeah, I, I can.
That's not your issue here, gentlemen, so.
I, I agree that, you know, you've got, you've got more there than you want now.
Exactly.
And to add anymore is just.
It's, it's just gonna cause me problems, I.
But I think with, you know, with what he's doing to contain it, he's getting rid of the other shed and the platform. So, the percentage of additional is, I think, pretty minimal.
It's, it seems that with those trenches, um, then even if it's a significant rain event, it'll take a while for those trenches to fill before anything could run off his property.
I'm curious, you've got the, grabbed the, the files out of the public folder there.
Yeah, that's the one I took.
And that page four on that, and that, and that's kind of approximating the drainage. And when I was putting that together, it appeared to me that, you know, it's only, it's only Tim's yard and maybe the property of the south that's draining through the culvert underneath your driveway and where you've got.
Where's the driveway in that, on that page four?
Well, you see the, the blue line that comes up and then stops right above the, uh.
Above the orange dot?
Yeah.
What's north?
That's the driveway?
What's north and what's south?
So, this is north and this area right here where the blue lot has a, the blue line has a little gap in it, that's county six. So, that's showing where the water is going through the culvert under county six, right under your property. Uh, so, what I was looking at, looked at that, there's this big bowl, here you can see the hills, there's a big bowl. Looks like all the water from all this is coming down from the north, whereas from the east, it's just.
Yeah, I can see that, that's, that's how that happened back in the day when, when Bill, when Bill Cornford owned that piece and he got some government money and built that pond and then all it turned into was a, was a breeding, breeding place for mosquitoes. Because it, and then as, as a, you know, it just never filled up and never developed right, you know, it was a, it was a plastic line pond. And then when I, I bought that piece of land, some of it was getting older years, he didn't wanna own it anymore and that. And I had the idea that I could, someday I was gonna grow that out and add that opportunity and we filled it in with sand from the bridge. But you can see that, we do have a lot of water coming from the top now. I mean, that, that, we got some issues we have to deal with.
Well, just for, for, I don't know, for information, Tom did do a lot of good stuff there. I mean, that was, like you said, the mosquito.
It was bad.
It never, it was always stagnant water sitting there. And he redid that whole drainage area there.
If you look at page five now that shows the, the aerial imagery. It looks like it's just, you know, you can see Tim's lot there with the graphic for the shed. And then maybe the one to the south of it, two one four nine oh oh one, those are the only two that look like they're draining from the east to the west underneath the culvert. I don't think anything's crossing the city road and the lots further than that drain south on the, on the south side of your property, I, I believe.
What's, what's ones you mean though, again here?
Like, uh.
Apple Drive or, I don't know the name of that street.
Valley Lane.
Valley Lane, there we go.
Yeah, I think, I think only the first two lots on there, um, on the north side, Tim's and the one south of it are draining through your culvert underneath your driveway. The rest of them look like they go south.
Water comes more from a little bit, you know, but.
There aren't any culverts under Valley Lane, are there?
I don't know that, Mr. Hefner, I don't know that. I don't think there are. I mean, they've done some changes with their sewer system, you know, they're putting sewer pipes in, but I don't know where that goes. You know, I don't know that area at all. I mean, I know, but I don't know what they did, so.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, just, just one last comment, you know, I, I, I have some concerns, you know, my concerns were, you know, that, that for Tim to make that big driveway, that he, that's what he says, you know, the elevation or his concrete wall or block walls or whatever. You know, to take care of that for that, because I don't want, we can't have that water running and freezing on our driveway for the, for the buses. And, you know, if he does, you know, commits to that runoff, you know, I don't know what, what's part, you know, you know. So, that absorbs the runoff, you know, instead of it, you know, let's say, let's all throw it down Tom's culvert, you know, I don't wanna do that, you know. But I, I think for the spot, you know, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, an engineer of ground surface water or anything. But I have done a lot of stuff on other properties that we own and, you know, hanging around town board stuff and all that stuff from the years of my dad and those kinda things, you know, the, you know, I guess what I wanna say to you guys is, is, you know, the fine print in your zoning manual is, you know, never put two pounds in a one-pound bucket, you know, so. I would hope that in your judgment that you can, you know, and you guys have studied this well that everybody has to have stuff on their property, you know, I mean, it's that, that's the key to it, not just because I'm the biggest chunk around there. And we were sat there with the hills on each side of us and that's probably how my dad chose that piece, because it was big enough for the bus company back in the sixties. And we've tried to prevent water and build things up and put drains and stuff in, but those are for us, not for everybody else to use as a tributary, or contributory.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's my last comment. So, thank you very much, gentlemen, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, you guys have any more questions of the applicant or of Tom or the? Maybe, uh, a little more clarification from Tim, from Tim, yeah. So, again, going around on this drawing that you made here, you got going out four feet and then from the building and then that one area there for fifteen feet, you have it going out eight feet, is that what you, on the south side?
No, it's actually going out ten feet.
Or ten feet on the south side?
Yeah, that's, I think I got a ten in there. Did I not put a ten in there? If I didn't, I'm sorry.
All right, so, again, what exactly are you planning on doing there?
I'm gonna.
In that four feet and in that ten-feet area, are you gonna dig that out and go down? How deep is that? Have you got that figured out, how deep you're going?
I'll go down as deep as I need to to put this garage up, how's that? I mean, I've been trying to get this garage, and to be honest with you, like Aaron said, if I wanted just a fifteen-hundred square foot building, we wouldn't be here and this garage would be going up already.
Well, you just have to get a permit to build it, but.
Right, but I mean, the permit would have been done, he said, if it was only fifteen-hundred square. The only reason we're here is because I'm adding a little bit to it.
All right, back to the question.
Okay. I'm gonna, yes, it's gonna be the same as the four feet all the way on the, all the sites. I'm gonna extend it ten feet instead of just four feet.
Just in that area, in that, in that?
Well, I might as well, since I'm digging it out, since I'm gonna put rock there for a parking pad. I might as well add it for water.
Okay. And so, in that whole area, you're gonna put the drainage rock, the round rock, pretty much? You're gonna have crushed rock coming on your driveway and all that?
Right, yeah.
But, so, you're gonna be driving down along that side of the building also to get back there to park your trailer too, probably then?
Yes and no. I mean, I, right now, I use his driveway and to get to my backyard instead of driving on my lawn. And not once have I interfered with a bus. You know, he had mentioned last time that he was afraid I was gonna start interfering with his buses if I drove all the way back there. For the last two months, the only time I've interfered, I've ran into, we'll say, one of his buses, is when I was coming home and his bus had cut the corner and I had to wait for his bus to leave to get into my driveway.
Okay, on that pad behind there, that fifteen feet going out there.
Yeah.
If you're gonna park something there, then you probably wouldn't wanna have the round drainage track there, I suspect, in there.
Well, it's gonna be underneath and on top, I'm gonna put the smaller rock. So, I can walk on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so you, I'm, I'm sorry, so you're parking on top of the, you would park something on top of?
A snowmobile trailer.
Yeah, just an empty trailer.
I mean, it weighs, it weighs five hundred pounds.
And he typically pulls those just with the.
With the four-wheeler. I don't drive back there with a truck.
Camper or something.
No, 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 just a snowmobile that I pull my ATVs on. So, it's just a little trailer.
I think it'd be very helpful if you could go around there and put in that drainage track and, I don't know, I, did you calculate how deep you thought you, three feet, you say?
Well, on here.
You said two feet is your foundation.
I, I haven't talked, yeah, I'm sure it's gotta be, the foundation's gotta be.
It, it all depends on what kind of event we wanna.
Frost line? This one? It's gonna be a floating slab?
It's gonna be a floating slab, yeah. It's gonna be heated, so I don't have to worry about frost. The slab is gonna be heated.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I think we should talk about, uh, so I have, I have a condition I'm gonna propose that's gonna speak to this infiltration.
And before you go there, I did talk to Rob, who, Erickson on the south side, and he had concern about the water as well. But he was more concerned about the water during the building process. And he just wanted to make sure that I was gonna put up silt screens, so nothing, which T and B Cement, I'm sure, will do when they do that. So, that will be done. And, and as far as water runoff, he had no concern. He, he was very happy with what I was proposing for around the garage. So, he wasn't worried about, you know, water going and, you know, taking out his gardens that are right there on the property line or anything like that.
When, when we're talking about this rock, everybody says round rock. We're really talking washed rock, right?
Sore rock, towards sore rock.
Yeah, which can be, um.
It could be round rock.
It can be round rock, it can be washed, um, hard limestone, um, just washed rock is what we're talking about.
I think the difference between this and say your typical sewer application is that this would have an overflow. So, if, you know, you're, the clogging of the soils wouldn't be as critical and that it's designed to overflow at some point where sewers, you know, never over, they're not designed to overflow. But, uh, in terms of what's proposed now, it would be the same dimension feature that's on the bottom of, of the sheet with the calculations of four feet by forty-six to a depth of three feet at, at the, at the deepest in the center with, with slope sides, so that water pushes to that point. That would handle a hundred and thirty-eight cubic feet of, of water. And if you look at the numbers on there for what a one-inch rainfall would, would produce, that'd be a hundred and eighty-four cubic feet of runoff. So, you know, we would be dealing with the ability to, the capacity to hold, not absorb, but just hold a little less than a one-inch event with a feature like that. Now, it would, it would be infiltrating continuously too, so. I mean, that, that level of detail is beyond my ability to calculate.
And then to add to that, if it's more than an inch, there's twenty-eight feet of septic, old septic drain field that is full of sand and everything else, that will also absorb the water. And I, I really don't, I don't foresee, unless it rains, you know, six, seven inches in an hour, I don't see any of my water going to that culvert.
Well, kinda half the building will be draining this way anyway, won't it? I mean.
Yeah.
Half will go this way and.
Right, I mean, there's gonna be some that's gonna drain to the east.
Some of this is gonna come this way.
So, it's not all going to the south.
So, if, if it gets out here, does it actually flow back this way eventually?
If it gets out.
If it gets out to the east, to the, to the east, does it, does it actually come back around toward that culvert or? Or does it go down over the hill that way?
I don't know, because water doesn't run there. You know, I've never seen water run right where that is. It just sits there. Because our septic mound is there, so it doesn't go anywhere.
Nothing flows toward Valley Lane though?
No.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, no.
It either absorbs or it opens a million times, it's way to the culvert.
There's a lot of absorption here with that area.
Oh, absolutely.
Now, a, a, another component of the condition is, is it would require all the roof runoff to go to the, to the, um, the feature.
Which it will do.
Yeah, that was the intention.
Yeah.
There will not be gutters going out into the lawn. All of the gutters will end within that rock feature, so that the water goes there.
And that would be, that would be done using corrugated drain tile pipe under, okay, that's.
On the driveway here, some of that's probably gonna slope right back to the, to the road out to the front of the house or whatever, too?
No, because the driveway is gonna be level.
I mean, no, I mean, is it gonna go this way? It'll all slope to the south.
No, none of it will go that way.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, from where the existing driveway is, it's either flat or, you know, it'll go downhill.
So, I'd like a little conversation from the board on why it's appropriate to, if, if we like this condition or if there's support for this condition, we're choosing a one-inch rain event, what is that selection of that one-inch rain event based on? Based on?
Guess.
Well, it's not, I mean, I guess I, I looked for average event totals, was not able to find any. But just based on my knowledge of the area, a one-inch event is a little heavier than normal event. I, I would, I would say anecdotally, do other folks have opinions on a one-inch event?
Are you talking one inch in an hour or just one inch?
One inch, period, total.
Okay.
Is that the appropriate number to be using?
What is a ten-year event considered?
I don't know that, but it's gonna be more than one inch.
More than one inch.
Yeah. At least I would suspect it would be more than one inch.
I would think that if you put in these additions, this rock and this holding base, and you're, you're able to hold an inch, basically hold an inch.
Absolutely.
Then if you get a two-inch rain, uh, there's gonna be no more water going off than what's going off right now.
Right, right, I mean, really, what-
And if you have a six-inch rain, it's a problem for everybody.
For everybody, exactly.
Okay, that's good. So I think, anybody else got any questions of the applicant? Okay, I think we'll go, if there's no more questions, we'll go to the findings effect, then, so.
Okay, you want me to grab that from you while I'm right here?
I think we need to keep that.
Do you wanna keep that?
Yeah, or at least we need to get a copy of it. So because some of the conditions being proposed are relevant to the findings, I'd like to present those before we get into findings, if there's no, if there's no more kind of discussion.
That's fine, yeah.
So a total of five conditions. Uh, number one, that the permitty shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Uh, number two, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances. And that really has to do with sheds being used for, you know, commercial purposes or residences, not that we suspect that, but you, you never know if somebody else owns the property in the future. Uh, number three, and this is the one dealing with the runoff, roof runoff will be collected in a stormwater feature, a minimum of four feet by forty-six feet located on the south of the building. All runoff from the thirty-six-foot by forty-six-foot primary structure shall be directed to this feature. The structure will extend three feet below grade and be constructed to have slope sides so as to collect water at an east-west center line.
Okay, just a second, now, that's different than you got written here?
Uh, no, that's the same as on, oh, yes, sorry, yes, yes, that is different than what you have, what I have written there.
You got three feet, and then you got, you have ten feet by forty-six, but you're going four feet.
Four feet by forty-six, yeah.
But on his map here, he's got fifteen feet of that, goes out ten feet.
Well, that's why we're calling it a minimum, so he could go above and beyond.
Okay. All right.
Uh, geo-textile fabric shall be installed and rock shall be placed so as to create a finished grade slightly concave to the surrounding area. Details of the feature shall be provided with the application for a zoning permit, and zoning staff shall inspect upon completion of construction. Alternatively, the applicant may choose to implement an alternative design prepared by a licensed engineer. Thoughts on that condition?
Well, I, I think that the plan you got, if you stick with that, you don't need a licensed engineer if you stick with that.
He's proposing more than what is being required in this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I guess the, that would give him, if this plan wouldn't work, or if he finds out that, uh, it's cost prohibitive, he could switch to something else, but it would have to be designed by, you know, an expert.
I agree with that.
All right, move on. Um, number four, during construction and until vegetation is established, a silt fence shall, shall be installed on the south and west sides of disturbed areas. And, uh, number five, and it's not on there either, the existing shed south of the house shall be removed prior to construction of the proposed shed, and if that wouldn't work, I guess we could switch, we could play with one that needs to be removed by, if, if items that are being stored need to have the new building before you can remove it, we could, we could tweak that, but we would want it removed at some point.
Existing shed and concrete-
Well, the existing shed will be removed before this starts, so it's going right up to it, so I gotta do it.
Well, probably wanna get the driveway in, which where the shed goes, I would assume.
Yeah, he can put the driveway in without any permitting from us, um, he just needs the permit for the building. So, uh, I've modified that, the existing shed and concrete pad south of the house shall be removed prior to construction of the proposed shed. Any questions or comments on, on those?
The part about the licensed engineer, I noticed in here, there was, um, I can't remember if it was from Al's Concrete, a, a tank?
Yeah.
I mean, um, three thou, to be, uh, three-thousand-gallon tank, septic tank, probably be cheaper than all the washed rock and excavation, and throw a sun pump in and you pump it out, I mean, but that, would that require a licensed engineer?
Uh, if the way we have it written now, yes, um, you know, if we wanted to, if there's interest in that, you could choose to put a condition on, um, you know, allowing something like that, and maybe you, we could inquire if-
Are you talking about having him install a tank and then collect all the rainwater in the tank?
Yeah, you could pump it out, when that-
Well, two in, two inches of filling.
I think it might be cheaper.
Yeah. Two inches of filling.
Why don't we just leave it like it is?
Yeah, but the tank wouldn't infiltrate.
Well, if it is a, the only reason I asked that was, um, an alternative plan had to have a licensed engineer.
Well, the plan he's got is on here, you know, if he sticks with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially that fifteen-foot section you're going out ten feet, where you're gonna park your trailer, yeah.
Like I said, it's just a little snowmobile trailer, it's not a vehicle trailer.
Okay, I'll move on to the findings if there's no other discussion. I'll read each finding requirement, and I'll provide the staff analysis, a few will require us to have a more detailed discussion. I'll call each member's name, vote yes or no, and provide your reason for your vote. If somebody's already stated a reason, it's not necessary for you to provide one. If you wish to subscribe to the staff analysis, you could simply say that. Uh, number one, that the proposed use conforms to the county land use plan, and the analysis here is, the building site is suitable and thus conforms to the policy of limiting development to suitable sites, diversity in housing types is included as a residential development policy goal, approving the application would provide an option to a landowner who preferred housing types, housing types including proximity to urban centers as well as at large personal shop. Larry?
I agree with staff analysis.
Ed?
I agree also.
Rich?
I also agree.
Jim?
I agree.
Uh, Dan?
I agree.
Number two, the applicant demonstrates a need for their proposed use. Uh, in this case, the analysis is the applicant has indicated he requires space to accommodate several classic cars and woodworking equipment, to the extent one can need these items and associated need for the adequate space to store and use them exists. Dan?
That's it, he's stated his need, the reasoning wants to build it.
Uh, Larry?
I agree.
Ed?
I agree also.
Rich?
I agree.
Jim?
I agree.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. In terms of water quality, the staff analysis is that no impacts to water quality are anticipated. Ed?
I would agree with that.
Rich?
I agree with that.
Jim?
I agree.
Larry?
I agree.
Dan?
Especially with the conditions that you propose on the end, the only change of water quality would be maybe an excess, if he didn't control the excess or the, you could ask him erosion, but I think what he's proposing here will neutralize or neutralize the effect.
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Uh, the analysis here is that with the addition of the proposed building, infiltration will be reduced, however, the lot would continue to have significant pervious area. A condition is proposed to capture roof runoff on site. Where we at, Jim?
I agree with the conditions of the, um, containing average rainfall will take care of minimum of water quantities.
Rich?
Agree, I think that, um, the conditions we, um, imposed, um, will take care of this, and I think he's actually done more than a lot of people have or will be doing more.
Uh, Dan?
I agree with, with your analysis.
Larry?
I agree with the analysis, and, uh, I guess I would add that the percentage, the, the percentage of additional runoff in a, you know, very significant event is, the percentage is, is small.
Ed?
I would agree that they're, um, gonna be okay with the proposal they've got.
Number five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Analysis here is, the soil at the site is mapped as a Bertrand seventy-six B, the soil survey indicates that there are only slight building limitations for buildings on grade. Slight is the rating given if soil properties are generally favorable for the indicated use. Dan?
I agree with your analysis.
Larry?
I agree.
Ed?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree, I think the silt wall, um, is ideal for this.
Uh, Jim?
I agree.
Number six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met, and the analysis is that no pollution hazards are anticipated. Ed?
I agree, that's correct.
Rich?
I agree with the analysis.
Jim?
I agree.
Dan?
I agree.
Larry?
I agree.
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis is the proposal will not result in the need for additional utilities, there may be an increase in stormwater runoff, particularly if the proposed driveway is accounted for, however, given the amount of area that is currently draining through the existing culvert system, this increase is likely, likely inconsequential and will not result in a need for additional drainage infrastructure. Rich?
I agree with the analysis, I think that the conditions take care of this.
Jim?
I agree.
Dan?
I agree.
Larry?
I agree.
And Ed?
I agree.
Uh, we didn't, uh, make a motion to skip, skip those that are not applicable, so I will ask, uh, for unanimous consent that number eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use, is not applicable.
I agree. Now, let's go down.
Hi, hearing, hearing no objection, I'll, I'll ask for the same on number nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard that may result from the proposed use. Any objection to that being considered not applicable?
No objection.
Number ten, that the interim use, obviously, that should be condition, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Uh, the staff analysis is that the neighboring properties are residential and commercial business, the placement of the shed is such that it does not appear to significantly impact views from existing homes, the shed would be visible from the rear of many homes that currently seed large sheds at the bus company. Stormwater runoff is a concern, and a condition to negate the impact of increases is proposed, the shed design of lights, a subjective measure is arguably arch, architecturally appropriate for the location. Uh, Larry?
I agree with staff analysis.
Ed?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree.
Jim?
I agree.
Dan?
Yes.
Number eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Uh, the analysis is that the land surrounding the property is nearly fully developed at present, therefore, no impact is anticipated. Dan?
I agree.
Larry?
Yes.
Ed?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree.
Jim?
I agree with staff analysis.
Number twelve, I'll look for, uh, any objections from members to deem this not applicable, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in them such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Any objection to that being deemed not applicable?
No, no objection.
Uh, number thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. Um, the analysis here is the, the shed is not intended as a residence. Larry?
I agree, should that be not intended, should that be, will not be for residential, rather than attempt, not intended?
Uh, yeah, we could, I'll make that your, your shed.
Said it will not be used for residence.
Ed?
Uh, I agree with that.
Rich?
I agree with that.
Jim?
I agree.
Dan?
Agree.
Um, number fourteen, I'll ask for any objection to this being deemed not applicable, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses, or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Any objections to that being?
No objection.
And number fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare, and the analysis is that as proposed, no impacts to the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare have been identified. Dan?
I agree.
Larry?
I agree.
Ed?
I agree.
Rich?
I agree.
And Jim?
I agree.
I've covered the conditions that staff is proposing. Happy to revisit or re-go through those again if there's any desire for me to do so.
I think we've got it pretty well, don't we?
Okay, so there's five conditions being proposed. Or I guess being recommended by staff.
Okay, do you, you have any questions on the conditions, Tim, that we talked about? Okay. All right, so we've had no objection to the findings in fact. So at this point, I'd entertain a motion to recommend approval or denial of the application, and then we'll have more discussion if we want. But first of all, entertain the motion, one way or the other.
With the five conditions, I'd make a motion to recommend approval of this.
With the five conditions?
With the five, yeah.
Good. Okay, we've had a motion and a second to recommend approval of this application subject to the five conditions. All those in favor? Just a second, is there any discussion on that? Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, motion carries. Okay, this will go to the county board, and these conditions will be written out and specified. Based a lot on your drawing here, okay, and that will be presented to the county board that way.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that will be when? May seventh.
You certainly are welcome to. Those, the process before the county board is typically not as lengthy or as involved as the process here this evening. Many, it's very unlikely they'll ask you to come up and address them, and many instances applicants are not present for those. But you're welcome to attend.
Okay, so is there any other, that concludes our public hearing on this matter.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Good. Is there any other? Is there any other business you talked about, any other old business?
I have any. No, I think that was just, perhaps, I guess if you'd like to, we certainly could, that was part of the...
Tom, you ever come?
No, nothing for business on my side.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, you bet, Tom. Yeah, thank you.
So Jim was asking about the draft policy that I took and implemented in this case on how we determine when somebody needs to get ACP for a accessory structure in a residential district that was included in your packets.
Is that approved by the board, county board, or who approves that?
I don't ask for approvals on those. I guess they just state how I implement the specific area of the ordinance. But it's more of an informational, you know, if you strongly disagree with how that's presented...
Well, it's a change, that's why I was wondering if it needed to be approved, that's why I was wondering.
It's not a, I'm not proposing to change any language in the ordinance, I'm just kind of providing some narrative on how I interpret what's currently written.
So will this be in the book later on, or is this...
I just have a binder full of them, and when the next person comes in and wants to build a shed...
So you just pass them on?
It's mainly for a guide to myself, so that we're doing it consistent.
Sometimes it's confusing to find out what you're looking for in the book, too.
Yeah, those are for areas where the ordinance is particularly unclear. Do we adjourn?
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.